Call meeting to order. Mr. Ferrish, would you lead us in the pledge? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Victor, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this wonderful day, God. We thank you for the rain that's been poured upon our valley, God. We thank you for the city of Montevista. We thank you for the police officers and the staff, God. We ask that you will give all of them enlightenment, Lord. Give them discernment, protect them out on the streets, Lord, and help us to make the right decisions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We'll call, Anita.
Counselor Foster?
Here.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sebella?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
A call is declared.
Do you have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We have one modification to the agenda. We need to add N five, city manager report.
She got forgotten.
She dropped me.
I would, uh...
It was a big meeting.
Approve to make the modifications to the agenda, adding five or N five.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the modifications to the agenda by adding N five, city manager report. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sebella?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, adding N five, city manager report.
Okay, approval of consent agenda. Minutes from regular meetings from July seventh, twenty twenty-two. Review and approval of accounts payable.
Amendment motion to approve the consent agenda?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting, July seventh, twenty twenty-two. Review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sebella?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Acclamations, communications, and appointments. Appointment of Amber Pacheco and Yvette Atencio to the One Sent Committee.
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, we did advertise additional people to get on the One Sent Advisory Board, and Amber Pacheco submitted her request. She is the like the assistant manager or the deputy acting manager when Senator Simpson's gone for the Rio Grande Water Conservation Board, and, uh, and a resident of Montevista, of course, and then Yvette Atencio, who you're gonna meet here in just a few minutes. She is a resident of Montevista as well and is the local representative for the LOR Foundation, which she's gonna tell you all about here in just a few minutes.
So, a motion to...
I would, uh, move to appoint Amber Pacheco and Yvette Atencio to the One Sent Committee.
Second. Been moved and seconded to appoint Amber Pacheco and Yvette Atencio to the One Sent Committee. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sebella?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to appoint Amber Pacheco and Yvette Atencio to the One Sent Committee.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll go to citizen comments. Special presentation. We'll do citizen comments first. City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Don't fail me, Margot.
You moved the podium. Hello, City Council and everybody here. Margot Alexander and I live in this wonderful town, and I just have to say how totally, absolutely impressed I was with the Sky High event. The people who organized that, who provided safety and protection should all get gold medals. It was absolutely beautifully done, and, and the parade and the protection from the police for things. I, I was just, it, it's the best one I have seen since I've been here, and I've only been here ten years, but it was outstanding, and they need to be patted on the back for such a good job. So, that's just what I had to say.
Thank you, Margot.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other citizen comments? Adam? This side there? No? All being taken lift? Okay. All right. We'll move on to scheduled appearances. In order to be on, that's portion of the agenda. You have to file appropriate paperwork with the city clerk no later than noon Monday prior to the meeting. So, Yvette Atencio for the LOR Foundation.
Good evening, Counsel and everyone in attendance. My name is Yvette Atencio, and I am with the LOR Foundation. I am the Montevista Community Officer. So, to, I did a little PowerPoint, um, to tell you a little bit about us. So, our mission at LOR is listening first. LOR works with rural communities in the Mountain West to enhance livability and prosperity while preserving the character that makes each community unique. Um, so, LOR realized that not every rural community fits a cookie-cut mold. Um, each rural community is unique, and so they wanted, um, to see how they could preserve and enhance quality of life in rural communities across the Mountain West specifically. How we work. LOR works with people in rural communities in the Mountain West to enhance quality of life. Uh, we work hyper-local. We are place-based, and our work reflects that approach. So, our goal is to be nimble, moving quickly to help solve problems communities have identified as priorities. Um, so my role as the community officer is to listen deeply to the local community and to understand its priorities. We work with individuals and organizations to kickstart their ideas for how to solve problems. That can look like grant funding, but sometimes it's simply, uh, making a connection to another resource or providing technical advice. So, some of the, um, solution stories I wanted to share for you were the Sup to Sack Initiative. So, LOR is currently in Montana, Wyoming, Colorado, and New Mexico. Montevista is the second community here in Colorado. Um, Cortez is part of the LOR Foundation. Um, so the Sup to Sack Initiative of Cortez resident, um, reduces reliance on plastic bikes by providing reusable options. So, the LOR funded a thirteen thousand dollar, four hundred and ten dollar grant to Cortez resident, um, September of last year. So, after Colorado State House Bill twenty-one dash eleven sixty-two created a ban on single-use plastic bikes by twenty twenty-three, one local Cortez resident realized how significant a problem they were. More than thirty thousand plastic bikes are provided through local stores in the Cortez area every day, and she also knew that Cortez residents are hesitant to change their behavior without understanding why. So, she approached LOR with the idea to work with local retailers and nonprofits to distribute free reusable, washable, large-capacity sacks and produce sacks to low-income individuals, and to build support for the effort by involving local students in the creation of multilingual educational materials about the benefits of reusable bikes. So, the impact it had was, after seeing the initial impact, store managers at Walmart, Safeway, and City Market donated hundreds more reusable bikes to the cause, and the city of Cortez is now working on additional forms of outreach to educate community members about House Bill twenty-one, um, eleven sixty-two. So, the way LOR works is we really wanna make an impact on the community, um, and something that's gonna be sustainable. We don't wanna set somebody up, an individual or an organization for failure, so we really wanna work to see we can, how make their ideas come to life and how it will sustain itself in the future. Um, so they also did a teacher and staff appreciation in Cortez. Um, LOR funded a fifty-eight hundred and twenty dollar grant to Cortez Teacher Appreciation Committee on April eighteenth of this year. Um, but liggered by the challenges of the pandemic, online education, and recent curriculum changes, educators in Cortez, Cortez's Montism of Cortez School District were exhausted, frustrated, and feeling a lack of appreciation. To buoy their spirits and address this problem, the Cortez Teacher Appreciation Committee, a volunteer group of engaged community members, approached LOR for funding to host an appreciation lunch that included prizes. Thank you, goodbyes and light music for the district's nearly three hundred teachers, principals, paraprofessionals, and school secretaries. So, those are just a couple examples of how we work. Um, we like to, being that I'm just recently started as the community officer here in Montevista, I'm looking to just let people know I'm here, um, get my contact information out, and then have people come to me with ideas, um, and solutions to problems that they see in our community. Um, of course, living here most of my life, I love our community, and I wanna see how we can get even better and how can we fix some of the issues that we see. Um, so, I really wanna encourage the community to come to me with ideas, um, and how I can help get your ideas, um, brought to life. Um, so we do work in smaller, it has to be a community benefit. It's not necessarily gonna benefit one person or one individual or one organization. It has to be something that's gonna benefit our whole community. Um, and so those are just a couple examples, but, for example, in Landar, Wyoming, they did, um, funding for improve, home improvements for veterans. Um, there was a need. They saw that need, and LOR stepped in and helped remodel and get things up to date for some of the veterans that live there. Um, so if you go to our website, uh, you'll see a bunch of solution stories that have, that we've been a part of. Um, so I was just really excited that LOR chose us to come here. Um, and a lot of questions I get is, what does LOR stand for? So, LOR stands for livability, opportunity, and responsibility. Um, and really, it's just listening to our community because who knows better than the people that live here, um, what the issues are and who have ideas of how to fix those problems. Sorry, I talked really fast. Um, I don't know what else, so...
How long has LOR been around?
So, LOR started, LOR was established, I believe, in two thousand seven, but it actually didn't really start doing, um, like, the money didn't actually come into LOR until, like, two thousand twelve. Um, so they've been established for a while, uh, and it was established by Amy Weiss and Eda Hadameo, um, who met in Tautz, New Mexico, and they saw that there was a need in rural communities, and they lived in the Mountain West, um, so that's why they wanna focus on this area. And I get asked why us, why, why Montevista? Of course, there's research behind it, but also they wanna see people, community members, who are rolling up their sleeves to do the work. Um, I met with Dale and Gigi, and I was explaining to them, the Sky High complex really put us on the map because they saw that our community was really trying to do something, um, put in the work. So, I mean, that's huge.
Awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, so I just wanted to tag team up of what Yvette has said. This is really a big deal for the LOR Foundation to put a community officer in our community. It's not that we reached out to them. They picked us. And there's the only one other community in Colorado that has one, and that's Cortez. And so, you know, it's really quite the reflection of, of, um, our community and what we've done and them recognizing this work. LOR used to be, how they, they started out was more of a conservation-type foundation, and so they partnered with other conservation groups and did really big projects, and then they decided they needed to kind of focus in and see if they could have a bigger impact in helping smaller communities, kind of one at a time. And so, we're just delighted to, to have you here and working with us and, um, and wanting to get involved, and we'll keep reaching out to you.
Yeah. So, I mean, I just really wanna get the word out and have people, um, reach out to me. And they can either go on the website, and they have information here if anybody wants to, um, get a business card or anything, but I really wanna just reach out as far as I can in our community, um, and it's not really specifically for one group. It's for everyone. Um, and I do speak Spanish, so I really wanna try to reach everyone I can. Because like I said, it's not just organizations. It's the regular person, regular citizen of our community that maybe they have an idea. They just don't know where to go, or they don't have the money to fund it, and that's where I can step in and see how I can help.
And this is really focused for Montevista?
Montevista specifically, yes. I've been asked a lot if it's for Rio Grande County, um, or the San Luis Valley, and it's not. It's Montevista specifically.
Well, I'm excited to go look at your website. If I just go to lor dot what?
Uh, yes. So, it's just lorfoundation.org.
LORfoundation.org.
Yeah, and so, I think I've secured an office space, so, um, I'll have an address and somewhere to meet. So, right now, if I do meet with anybody, I'm just kind of meeting them out in the community, um, because I really don't have somewhere that I can call home, work home. So, yeah, just excited, and thank you for your time and for listening and get the word out.
Do you think you have an office space secured already?
I think so.
Okay.
It's in the works. Yeah, that was a struggle. Been trying to find somewhere, um, but I did meet with a couple people, so I'm hoping to have something hopefully by next week, at least something in writing.
Cool. Do you have some of your cards?
I do.
You sure we got, before you leave, make sure we...
Yeah. So, I have some one-sheets here, and then I'll get you the cards to, do you want me just to do that afterward?
You can just stand at the door and give one to every single person.
Well, and Yvette, if you don't wanna leave, I mean, if you'd like to leave, you're, of course, welcome to stay for the meeting.
Yeah.
Just give Anita or just leave your information up here.
Okay.
We'll get it to Counsel.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks for being on the One Sent Committee, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We will move on to the discussion on Valley Three Theater. Who would like to lead that?
Um, I will start off. So, you all had approved for me to apply for a ready grant, and we put some, some matching funds in that, and we did receive that grant. Dola hasn't given me the paperwork yet to actually sign off, and, and then we'll do an RFP, uh, and that's for the business plan of both the Valley Theater and Sky High. And then Councilwoman Locke brought it up and, and asked if we could reopen the discussion about this, and so we put it back on the agenda for you all to, to talk about it because Councilman Foster also brought it up a couple meetings ago. And, you know, and I said, let's hold off until we get the business report done. Uh, I've got five people that have approached me as far as being interested in potential purchasing of it. I've told them all, you know, let's just hold off until we get this business plan done, and, and it'll help everybody decide if that's the way they wanna move forward. Um, based on whatever you guys wanna discuss today, if you decide, no, let's go ahead and come up with a process to sell it or auction it or leave it as is, I can, um, just visit back with Dola. We'll return that portion of the money, or they won't give us that portion of the money of what they would have estimated the Valley Theater to be when we put in this proposal.
So, so the grant would have covered or, or, or will cover the creation of a business plan? Is that, that's what we're looking at?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, the viability of it.
The viability of it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My opinion is I wanna see it stay at theater, but I know that this is a discussion that has been going on before I even was seated on Counsel. And I know, please, nobody needs to tell me. Government takes a while. Be patient. It's been a while. It's been a while. I, I, and we've got lots of people interested in it. And I know some of them, you, you said five, and so I don't know that many, so I don't know all of them, but I know some of them, they have a business plan or are business-minded enough to, to formulate one. I don't see the benefit of spending money. I realize it's not our money. It's grant money. It's given money, but it came from somewhere. I don't, I just don't see the benefit of spending that money and, 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 and dragging this out even longer. How long would it take? You said that Dola hasn't sent you the paperwork yet. So, we don't even know how long it would take to do, to, to produce a business plan.
Right. It, it'll probably be another four or five months, is my estimate.
Yeah, and why? That, that's my question to everybody. Why are we gonna wait another four or five months? We've waited years to do something with this. It's an expense on the city. Pretty sure you can, please correct me if I'm wrong, we, we pay the insurance?
We pay the insurance. We pay the, the utilities. We pay this. I'm not sure exactly how the agreement went, but there's wages in there for the
Right.
kind of the manager of it. And so, Anita, yeah, we can show you the, the paper, Sarah. Um, Anita did a analysis of it for you guys to look at, what the, what the city has put into it for the last five years or so.
Eight and a half?
Eight and a half what?
Years. That was eight and a half years since...
You said, how mu, we put in how much?
Offering expenses. You want me to pass out the...
Yeah, you can.
...tickets to them?
Yeah, it, it's almost two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Two hundred and seventy-two thousand over the, those years total. There's one sheet for, um, I'm sorry, expenses and one for contributions, donations.
Thank you.
See too well that way.
Oh, it's making me dizzy.
So, so this, this list, our expenses plus the donations that have been given. Okay.
If you have any, why don't you give one to Sarah?
Susan.
Susan, I'm sorry, Susan. Apologize.
They dropped off their salaries.
Huh?
I was just gonna say that they dropped, we dropped the salaries in twenty nineteen.
Wow.
Yeah, it's expensive to, to heat, heat and cool that place.
And, and that's our taxpayers' money. That's not our money. That's not money that the theater's making, obviously, or we wouldn't be paying it. Our taxpayers are paying this. And we just ask them to let us raise their water bills.
Well, you keep looking at me. You're the one you need to look at.
Okay, I'm just asking, I'm just looking at anybody that'll, you know, listen. Um, that's a lot of money out of, out of our taxpayers' pockets that could be used for so many other things. I mean, think about it. We, all of our roads need repair just about. All of our sidewalks have something wrong with them. That, that's, that's just looking at superficial stuff. We have a wastewater plant that we've gotta be putting in. Now, this amount here is, pardon the pun, a drop in the bucket, but it's a drop. And that's how you fill the bucket, is a drop at a time. So, I, I, my opinion is, you know, I, I don't, I don't see the need to wait any longer. We've got people interested. I, I believe that we all want it to stay a theater, that we all wanna keep it a theater, and we can make that part of the sale agreement, that, you know, you can buy it, but you've gotta keep it a theater. That's it. We can, you can, we can put any rules in there we want to. We can tell them what color they have to paint. We have to, but we don't wanna do that. But I would love to entertain some of these business, some of these people that wanna put forth the proposal. I would love to see what their plan is, and I would love for us to kind of stop the bleeding now, not six months from now. You know, we've let it bleed for so long. And again, this was a discussion even before I got, I remember hearing it. So, I understand government's taken a while. Our while's done now, in my opinion. We, we've had our while. There's, and, and I don't see what it would hurt to entertain some of these proposals.
What would be the steps to do this? I know we talked to the auction or...
Yeah, you guys have, there'd be lots of different ways. You know, one, we need to make sure that it's posted so that everybody, including the group right now that's doing this, everyone has a, a fair shot at submitting something. But we can auction it. You can give it. You can set a price. You can ask for the proposals. So, whatever you guys, however you guys wanna proceed, just let me know, and we'll, um, I'll work with staff, and we'll come up with some suggestions on however you wanna move forward for your next meeting.
We would have to have a public meeting on this, right?
Um, I don't, no.
I think you would wanna have a public meeting on this, Mayor. I mean, this is, this is a real critical choice that you're making here. So, I think you would.
I think if we wanted to be a theater going forward, and that's what I, I prefer that it stays a theater, we put out a request for proposal. We wouldn't just auction it off, but we'd have specific guidelines of what we're looking for, and then, yeah, at that point, we can decide how to... We can evaluate the proposals. Maybe one of them's great, maybe three of them are great, maybe none of them are, and we can move forward. Um, with this grant we get for the business plan, what strings are attached? Because we could do a request for proposal and get nothing that meets our criteria. Then everyone could be thinking of it as a different business than what we're looking for.
Yeah, we, we would, um, or I would put together specifically what we, the information we want. So, it would address, you know, the marketing, what we would need to do for marketing, how we would, um, any capital improvements, potential costs of that, what's the potential revenue we could make off of it or generate from it, um...
Yeah, I guess what I was asking is what, so if we did that, and we ended up taking somebody's proposal and giving it to them or selling it to them, whatever, do we have to pay the money back on that? Or can we run them concurrently? We get requests for proposals, but also as a backup, we have our own business plan developed in case things don't pan out like we think.
I think that would probably be more cumbersome. I think you guys need to either decide to, to, you know, you can hold a public meeting, you could hold a public meeting at the movie theater and, um, and let folks come in and, and air their thoughts and concerns and opportunities that they see with it. And, and I could just let Dola know that that portion, and I can't, I'm sorry, I don't remember the amount of money that we had allocated, saying this is what we pay for that information. But we just deduct that from the grant and, and proceed with Sky High.
Legally, you could, you could put in your deed, picking up on what Counselor Locke was saying, you could, uh, put in your deed a restriction there about how it's gonna be used. But that in turn precipitates what your vision is for that theater as a central item for your downtown on Adam Street, and how you're going to develop that, or how you want somebody else to develop that as a whole focus of your downtown development perhaps. But you can, you can do that legally and put that in your deed with a possibility of reversion. So, there's a lot of, you got a lot of tools there to legally work with.
So, we, we could just put in that the sale is contingent on this stays a theater?
Yeah, you could, you could put that into your deed that it, uh, you know, it would be, it would have to remain as a theater, uh, and you might want to collaborate on that a little bit, but, uh, and that, that there would be a reversion. Because that, that would really focus the attention of the owner on what town, what, what your goal is for the downtown. As an entertainment district or whatever you're going to decide.
Well, I, I think just, I mean, yeah, there is a vision for the whole downtown, but you have to do that one, like a puzzle, you put it together one piece at a time, and whoever, however, whenever this becomes changed, that's just one piece of the puzzle, you know? So, we don't need to concern them with the whole vision of downtown, we just need to concern them with this is your piece. You know, your, your piece is to keep this a theater, a movie theater. And I, and honestly, I'm extremely concerned about liability issues. I realize that we pay insurance, and that's great. Well, it's not great either, we shouldn't be paying, taxpayers shouldn't be paying the insurance. But we do pay insurance. But that place is in ill repair. It's better, I know some things got fixed, it is better. But it's in ill repair, and there are still possibilities of people going in there and getting injured, of employees getting injured, or volunteers getting injured. Guess who's gonna pave that lawsuit? Again, our taxpayers. We're setting them up. It's not my money, or your money, or your money, or, I mean, I mean, it is, but, but only because we're part of the four thousand-plus citizens. You know, do they, we, I think we have to ask ourselves, do they want us as a board to set them up for a lawsuit? Because that's kind of what we're doing. Those are kind of the decisions we're making.
Well, I'm just one of this group, but I think that we need to do, have a public hearing? Public meeting, maybe not public hearing, public meeting in regards to that? And give it enough notice so we can get everybody in, and then we can get, like you said, proposals. If you've got five interested people, let them lay their spell on it, and then we can determine how we want to sell it. And I think it's, uh, if you've ever got the big pockets to be able to, though in the right term, I shouldn't use that, but whoever's most serious about it and will do with the restrictions, put it together.
The only thing that I would suggest is that, that we are careful with whatever restrictions you guys want to put on there. And I'd say, you know, you've got to think about saying it's gotta stay a movie theater forever. Because you just look at the changes in technology, and movie theaters may go away one day. So, do you say it needs to remain a movie theater for at least the next fifteen, twenty years, or something like that? So that as the technology changes and the industry changes, you're not trying to bind somebody to something that does no longer
Feasible.
Is feasible.
Yeah. I, I, um, again, I agree, I'm, I'm just one vote. I, I don't see the need, um, I don't see the benefit of having a public meeting before we decide to put out requests for proposals. Because I think there's a lot of emotion around this. And I think that we were put here to make decisions and, and to move forward. Now, the, the proposals that are put, that are brought to us absolutely should be public. You know, if we have ten people that want to put a bid on it and give us a business plan and give us ideas and, you know, what their vision and what they can do and prove that they can do it, that absolutely should be public. But I don't see the need to have a public meeting beforehand for that. That's just my, I'm just one, that's my, my one sense.
I'm kind of both in a sense, because, like, I heard you saying, well, that's our taxpayers' money, but that's not, we give them an option to say anything about it. Know what I mean? So, like, if we say it's a taxpayer's money, then let's give them an opportunity to have a voice and say, well, I don't want that. Well, I do want that. Um, but at the same time, I, I feel you too, saying, well, we're here to make decisions, let's make a decision. But at the same time, like, what if somebody can't make it there? Or what if somebody does want to make it there, but now they don't have a chance to voice their opinion? Know what I mean? It's like, okay, so what are we gonna do?
Well, that's why I said that the, when we have the meeting where the proposals are, are presented, absolutely that should be public, and absolutely the public should be able to speak, you know, there.
So, is this
But, but there's no, there's nothing for them to talk about now.
So, I'm just curious, um, with lore, um, how would this come into play? Is there something that can happen with lore in a movie theater? Because it's a whole, the community theme, know what I mean, like?
I wrote down her information, because I was gonna, I was talking to her after the meeting. I was, I don't know if you'll be satisfied with my answer, but
Whatever it is.
Maybe, I don't know.
Okay.
Um, just because right now it's, we want to do small projects that are really gonna have an immediate impact. Um, and the movie theater to me sounds like it's a really high-dollar project. Am I correct?
I guess there's some money involved in that, but
So, um
To bring it up to where it needs to be, it's gonna be, yeah, it'll be a lot dollar.
Um, I mean, I can discuss it, but I, I can't say yes, and I can't say no.
Cool.
The, the problem that, that, that I see with keeping it as a publicly owned entity is that now the city's in the movie theater business, and we have been for a long time. That's not what we need to be. We don't need to be, we're not in the movie theater business. But we need to, I see our job as making Montevista business and residential friendly. By that, I mean, let's entertain, and, and just using this as an example, let's entertain these proposals. And, and let someone who is a, who is a business person, a movie, movie theater person, someone who has that set of skills, let them run that. And let's get that off of, I, I remember Counselor Lorenz saying one time that, um, you know, we need to stop encouraging, or I forget exactly how you put it, but we need to, to let people know that the city's not always the answer. You can't always come to us for the answers, we're not running the businesses. Our citizens need to step up and take over, you know, some of this. And honestly, I'm seeing a lot of that lately. I'm seeing a lot of different organizations starting to form. And when I say organization, I might be talking about a formal organization, I might be talking about a group of three friends who are just like, hey, let's do this, you know, and, and they just do it. And that's what we need to see more of. What I don't, what I think we need to start doing is trying our best to get some of these things off of the city's plate. Because it's not our, it's, it's not fair, it's not our business. It's just not our
I guess I'd be in line with Martha, though. I think we want a fairly open-ended request for proposal. This is the building, this is what it is, this is what you get, and we want it to remain a theater. If we take it out and have a hearing ahead of time, we're gonna get a lot of opinions of, we want this, and we want this, and we want this, and we're gonna corner ourselves to where, we put the request for proposal out, all of a sudden, well, that doesn't fit what I want to do, and that doesn't fit what I want to do, and we end up with nothing. So, let's put out an open-ended, and exactly like Martha says, let the people who have the passion for it, or know what they're doing, come up with their business plan. Then we evaluate it and see if it fits what our goals are. And then have the hearing, so everyone knows where it's going as we go forward.
Yeah, um, irregardless of what Dola would come up with, I am in favor of, um, selling the thing. I think that we do need to take RFPs on it, and I think it needs to be considered by what has the most positive community impact, not by, you know, the dollar value that's put on to, you know, the building. So, yeah, I'm not sure it's worth going through the, the whole thing. I mean, it might be feasible, it might be beneficial to a prospective purchaser if there was a business plan pre-cut for them. Um, but if I was a purchaser, I probably wouldn't pay a whole lot of attention to it, because I'd probably have my own plan already in place. So, yes, I think we put it out there with, I totally agree that we put it out there, we evaluate it, and, um, we look at it in terms of what's gonna be the best for the community.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'm telling you.
Still talking, or, what are we doing? What are we doing here?
We need to add a motion on that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, somebody wants to make a motion? Go, Martha.
Since I brought it up, I'll do it, I'll take, I'll, I'll take it on this. I move that we release the RFPs for the Valley Three Theater with the condition that the proposals allow for the theater to remain a theater for the next fifteen years unless technology makes that impossible.
Second. Nope.
No, we didn't reword that, yeah, I did, I was, I was, it wasn't really right.
What I would suggest is first, you make a motion to return the money and not do the business plan with Dola.
Okay, I make a motion to return the money and not make a business plan.
On the Valley Theater.
Uh, on the Valley Theater. Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to not do the business plan on the Valley Theater from the money from Dola. Is there any more discussion? You need that?
You said that there was matching money on that, do we not have to match that money now that's not going for the Valley Three?
Correct, so that will all be adjusted. So, what, what the grant will reflect and the funds that you guys approved will only be for the business plan for the Sky High, as well as then looking at the opportunity for a, a chained hotel.
Okay, thank you.
But, can I make a statement? In twenty eighteen
No, not, not on this one.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, these need to be corrected? Because we reimbursed the city for wages starting February twenty eighth. Because I have a propositet law statement that I did, and it says we paid the city back for those wages. So, the wages that are on here, not correct.
Well, we can't take any of that into account, because we're in the voting's part, so
So, do you need a
We, we can't even know that we heard that.
Okay.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protencicola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to remove the theater from the Dola ready grant.
Okay, now I would
Now, we need to have a motion for the RFPs?
Yes, and what, um, I think what, what I would suggest is that you make the motion for staff to work on a plan in order to, to, for the consideration of selling or giving away whatever you're doing regarding the proposal process. And let us work on that and bring it to you guys at the next meeting, and then we can
Let me just direct, we have to do that, and then we can decide to vote on it.
Right. Just keep it real clean and simple right now, and then we'll bring you guys back the plan, a plan. Multiple plans for you guys to say, okay, this is kind of how we want to go forth and do this.
Okay. Let's see if I get it right this time.
You can make whatever motion you want, Martha. And we'll vote on it.
Well, I can, but I've made some weird motions, so try to be careful. I move that we instruct the staff, the city staff, to create a plan to best release the RFPs for the sale of the Valley Three Theater.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
You got my notes?
To, applies the staff to make plan come up with for the RFP for the Valley Theater. Is there any more discussion? You need a
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protencicola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to instruct staff to work on the plan for proposals for the Valley Three Theater for the next meeting.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero eight, resolution proving an amended budget and appropriation of funds for calendar year twenty twenty-two.
Mayor, council members. I brought before you a resolution to amend the twenty twenty-two budget, um, I will just read it. Whereas the City Council of the City of Montevista has conducted a public hearing to review the proposed twenty twenty-two budget in accordance with the Home Rule Charter and approve the twenty twenty-two budget on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas the City of Montevista has made provisions therein for revenues in an amount equal to or greater than the total proposed expenditures as set forth in said budget. And whereas it is not only required by law in the City of Montevista Home Rule Charter, but also, if necessary, amend the revenues and expenditures provided in the budget for the purpose described below, as not to impair the operation of the city. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Montevista. Number one, amend the appropriation of funds. The following sums are hereby appropriated for the following funds. So, the revenues in the general fund would, um, increase from three point nine mil- three million, nine hundred and forty-nine three million, nine hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars to four million, four hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars or an increase of five hundred eighty-five, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The Conservation Trust Fund would remain the same. The Urban Renewal Authority would increase by a thousand and forty dollars from a hundred and five, five hundred and fifty to a hundred and six, five hundred and ninety. The Airport Grant would increase by three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The Kids Connection Revenue would increase by forty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. The Water Fund would increase by five thousand. Sewer Fund would increase by fifteen hundred. Capital Improvement Fund will increase by three hundred and forty dollars. Capital Project Fund increased by six hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. One-Cent Sales Tax Fund Revenue will increase by a hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. The expenditures, on the other hand, the general fund expenditures will increase by five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. Conservation Trust will not change. Urban Renewal Authority will increase by a thousand forty. Airport Grant will increase by three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Kids Connection Expenditures will decrease by eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight. Water Fund will decrease twenty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-four. Sewer Fund will increase three thousand, five hundred and twenty-six. Capital Improvement Fund will increase thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine. Capital Project, six hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight. One-Cent Sales Tax Fund will increase one hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. So your year-end cash reserve in the general fund will end up changing from the original zero balanced budget to an deficit, an excess of seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. The Conservation Trust Fund will remain zero balanced. Urban Renewal Authority will remain at a zero balance. Airport Grant will also remain zero balanced. Kids Connection will change from a zero balanced budget to an excess of fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and four. The Water Fund will decrease the deficit from a hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven to seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-three. The Sewer Fund deficit will increase by two hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and twelve. Capital Improvement Fund will decrease from seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and sixteen to an excess of thirty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven. Capital Project Fund will remain zero balanced and the One-Cent Sales Tax Fund will remain unchanged with the excess of twenty thousand. Number two, severability of any part, section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this resolution is for any reason held to be invalid. Such invalidity shall not affect the validity of the remaining provisions. Number three, the effective date, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its approval by the City Council. I would ask that you approve the budget amendment, mid-year budget amendment. Do you have any questions?
Water Fund. Um, we were projecting an increase in revenue of five thousand, yet we just did a water fund increase. Is that no, Rob shaking his head?
It wasn't the water fund, it was the sewer fund.
Oh, it was a sewer fund, okay.
The water fund, I, I could give you a little bit of explanations maybe warranted. Um, the water fund, that increase of five thousand was Rob thinks we can increase our revenue on water taps. So we increased the revenue by five thousand on the water fund. The increase in, in the revenue, let me just go back to the general fund. And pretty much offsetting expenditures are accounting for grants that we had that we did not know about when we created the original budget. So we have ARPA that we're using for fire cleanup. So that revenue is offset by the expense that we had. We are also, we also used some of the ARPA money for the Valley Three Theater to do the deep cleaning. So that revenue was offset by the expense. The Police Department has a number of grants that they've received and are, and that they use for officer safety and equipment, rifles, computers, tasers, vests. Um, he had, he's really good and, and, um, you know, so the revenue that he gets from that is pretty much offset by the expenses. The, the revenue for the highway user tax, I decreased that based on what we've been receiving actual. So some of the line items are adjusted based on our current actual spending. And some of them were adjusted, like I said, because of the grants that we received and the offsetting expenses. So that's why the difference is, you know, seventeen thousand. Another significant one, I guess, was the revenue that we estimated for Sky High events rentals. Based on what's actually happening, I believe we can get more revenue budgeted for that for the rest of the year. Let's see, what else? Donations and contributions, that's an increase, but that's basically a wash because the Alcon Foundation gives us another payment. So we can make two payments in the year. And when I did the original budget, I didn't include that. So that's a offsetting revenue and expense also, but it wasn't there. So. Uh, other financing sources had to budget for the capital lease for the police vehicles. We split it between the general fund and the One-Cent Fund. And that's kind of a offsetting with your expense also, but it has to be recorded in your transactions. So that's the, the, a lot of the differences in the general fund. The Airport Grant, we received the, uh, the hu, the three hundred and eighty-eight thousand grant for the fuel farm. So that will be offsetting expenses also. Kids Connection, I had not budgeted. She received a workforce sustainability grant that we didn't have in the original one, so we were able to put that in. She's also getting that fifteen thousand dollar grant that she talked about for the computer lab. So that was listed.
They don't know about that yet. They don't know about the computer lab.
Oh, they don't? I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. But I mean, it's exciting news, but.
I'm sorry. Got to tell the back.
But we got, um, remember it was AT&amp;T that gave them the Chrome, the Chromebooks. And then they called back and they gave us, I think I told you this, we gave one then to the Police Department and we gave one more to Anika. And then we gave four to the school. And that was through AT&amp;T. But then they came back and called her and said, would you submit a grant to us? And it was, it was due Friday night at Stampede. Would you give us your proposal in creating a computer lab? And so after the parade, she got the paperwork in to, um, by the deadline. And they called Monday morning and the computers arrived in Monavista. So she's gonna, and I don't remember how many computers it was, ten something. So.
Computers and wiring and.
So AT&amp;T was being very generous.
Cool. I guess my question is, is that after the increase, and maybe I'm not looking at this right, uh, after the increase that we passed on the sewer fund that we're only showing a fifteen hundred dollar increase for the next six months? Am I not reading that correctly?
I did not really touch the revenue on the sewer fund.
Okay.
For the, the utility increase.
Well, I'm looking, I was, I was looking at revenue and it says sewer fund right there and it increased fifteen hundred dollars. I'm thinking, well, we just passed a rate increase.
Okay, the, the, the increase for the revenue for the sewer fund was also an estimate. Rob thought we could get another fifteen hundred dollars for sewer taps.
Okay.
So we did that.
So that number does not include the new price increase?
Charges for services.
Okay.
Is that because it's just gonna go straight to the wastewater management anyway?
Um, I neglected. I just, I apologize.
We'll get back and do another one.
And another one at the end of the year. That's what I faulted chief. If I screwed something up in your budget, I'll do it again.
And I've probably asked the question before and I don't remember the answer. What is the capital project increase that we are looking at doing?
The, um.
Or is that, that's the Sky High?
Let me look at the Capital Improvement Fund, which we have to, we're transferring that, that decrease in, in their cash reserve is because he, his grant requires a ten percent match. So we're transferring that ten percent, thirty-eight thousand from the improvement fund to the airport fund. Then the capital project, a lot of this is the remainder of the Sky High construction.
Okay.
Alcon that was not, that we thought when we were doing budget last year was gonna be done and it's not done. So we still have some grant money we can get, some expenses for the construction, a final payment. And then the One-Cent Sales Tax Fund, you don't, you don't see it reflected in the resolution, but the value of the vehicles that chief bought is put in as a revenue and an offsetting expense for the value of the assets.
Okay.
But in the bottom line, it didn't change the percentages or anything of the One-Cent Fund.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash eight, amending sums of money for the twenty twenty-two budget. Seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh eight, Resolution approving amended budget and appropriation of funds for calendar year twenty twenty-two. Is there any more discussion? Yunita?
Counsel Foster.
Aye.
Counsel Locke.
Aye.
Counsel Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh eight, approving an amended budget and appropriation of funds.
Okay, second reading ordinance nine one three regulating the placement of mur, murals.
Murals.
Murals. Who's doing that?
So the, um, you guys had some good discussion last, or gosh, a month ago regarding the murals. Um, I think that this, this is concise and kind of easy enough that it's gonna be pretty workable for our constituents. They have, um, we talked about this in planning and zoning, just to kinda get the general sense of, of their support of this. They were okay with the language and I think we're good to go. We've got a person in the audience tonight that's interested in getting another mural started, so that's pretty cool. And, um, and so they'll have to submit their, their picture and the color scheme of what they want. They have to get approval from the owner of the building for the placement of it. And they'll bring it in and I'll approve it and they pay their ten dollar fee, twenty-five dollar fee, ten dollar fee.
Ten.
Ten dollar fee. So we're gonna get, we're gonna really be bringing in the revenue and paint, paint the town.
You just, you just did the budget amendment. Damn it.
We gotta do it again.
Do we need to redo this thing all again?
I, I.
Just make a motion? Okay. Yes, make a motion.
Wanna make a motion to approve ordinance nine one three regulating the placement of murals. On second reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance number nine one three regulating the placement of murals in the City of Monavista. On the second reading. Is there any more discussion?
Just wanna commend the staff and the city attorney for cranking this out so fast in P and Z. They'd originally wanted a hundred and eighty day moratorium and we showed that, you know, maybe government can move a little faster than that.
Gene, appreciate that too. Yunita?
Counsel Foster.
Aye.
Counsel Locke.
Aye.
Counsel Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries approving ordinance nine thirteen on second reading for the regulating the placement of murals.
All right, contracts and agreements.
And just to, to give you an update, um, I've secured the funding for the next mural with, uh, they came forth with a, a picture that's gonna go up on the backside of Rain Brew's and it's gonna be around agriculture. And so through the generosity of the Monavista co-op, they're donating five hundred dollars worth of paint. I don't know how many gallons that is. And Xcel Energy is donating twenty-five hundred dollars. And Coors is donating the other twenty-five hundred dollars. So, um, they're moving forth. Yeah, moving forth of the next one.
It's probably gonna glow at night, right? That's cool. Very good. All right, contracts, agreements, and leases. Contract for the airport fuel farm.
There's a good little zap. She's like.
Good evening, counsel. I got a couple of things in here for you. So in your packet, you will see the bid tabulation, a memo from myself, and then a contract. On the contract, Serser, our insurance company, has asked for some revisions. We do not have that yet. It doesn't change any of the substance as far as the dollar figures or anything like that. They just wanted some inclusions as far as insurance requirements, um, workers' compensation requirements from the contractor. Steve, our consultant, has reached out to Alcon and they are amenable to it, so there's no issues with that. We just don't have the paperwork ready for counsel to review. So it really doesn't change anything that I'm gonna be asking you tonight. I just wanted you to be aware before I start that there are gonna be some changes on the contract as far as formatting and a few of the items that they're asking. Gene's been working with Steve and him and I had a conversation before this tonight. So I think everybody's happy with what will happen. It'll probably happen first thing Wednesday morning. So we'll have it. So, um, I'll just read my memo to you. So, um, what I'm up here tonight for is to re, award or request for proposals for the Monavista Airport Fuel Farm contract. On July twelfth, twenty twenty-two, the Monavista Public Works Department, along with our consultants, the Aviation Planning Group, held a bid opening for the Monavista Airport Fuel Farm project. The project originated from airport board discussions on the need to upgrade the current fueling system at the airport to keep up with some of our surrounding airports and keep us in competitive. Monavista applied and received a grant from the State of Colorado DOT Aeronautics Division for three hundred and fifty thousand, with the city having to make a local match of thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. This was a budgeted expense. You just approved that. The project was legally bid and advertised in both the Monavista Journal and the Alanos Courier. Bids were open. Bids were opened at two oh five in a public meeting. Parties in attendance were the Aviation Planning Group, the city of Monavista, and a representative from one of the two bidders, Alcon Construction. There were two bids that were read into record, one from the Esatera Group Incorporated for a total sum of four hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred dollars. The other from Alcon Construction for a total of three hundred ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Both bids met the minimum qualifications for content and Alcon's bid was determined to be the apparent low bidder. Steve Harris from APG requested to take the bids, bids back and produce a recommendation after he had a chance to fully review the bids. Steve later in that same week provided a recommendation to approve the bid from Alcon Construction. The bid tabulation is attached, it is the first page in your, in your packet. Tonight's staff would like to recommend that counsel award a contract for the Monavista Fuel Farm Airport Project to Alcon Construction for the sum of three hundred ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and no change. Alcon's bid fully meets the bid specifications and their experience with this type of project should bring a quality project to the city and produce a fuel farm that will carry the airport into the future. The bid was within budget and allows room for us to have project management services for even a better project. My recommendation to city council is that counsel award a contract for the Monavista Airport Fuel Farm Project to Alcon Construction for the sum of three hundred ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and allow the city manager, Gigi Dennis, to sign the contract. So we'll be happy to answer any questions. So moved? Chicken.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve contract agreement with the city of Monavista and Alcon Construction and have the city manager, Gigi Dennis, sign the contract. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to award the contract to the airport fuel farm to Alcon Construction and allow city manager, Gigi Dennis, to sign the contract.
Thank you. Thank you all. Come on, Anita. June financials?
Twice in the same day.
Included in your packet was a memo, um, about the June financials, plus you had, um, I've included some detail for the other funds aside from general water and sewer fund. Below, I'll just read the memo like rapid. Below is a summary of the city's major funds for the month ending thirty of two thousand twenty-two. The city has completed fifty percent of the fiscal year. And the general fund total revenue is at fifty-five percent of the approved budget or two million, one hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred and one dollars. The largest source of revenue continues to be taxes totaling one million, five hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-one, which is seventy-four percent of total revenue received year to date. Our tax revenues have increased by approximately five percent over this same period in two thousand twenty-one and nineteen percent over this same period in two thousand twenty. Total expenditures in the general fund are at forty-four percent of the approved budget or one million, seven hundred twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-one. As of month end, the general fund's portion of cash in the main checking account is two million, five hundred thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven. Revenue exceeded expenditures by four hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars, which brought the fund balance to three million, one hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-three. The number of months of operating expenses in the unassigned fund balance at month end is nine point two nine months. The water fund, the total revenue in the water fund is at forty-three percent of the approved budget or, um, four hundred and fifty thousand and twenty-one dollars. Total expenses are at thirty-five percent or four hundred and five thousand, six hundred and forty-seven. As of month end, the water fund's portion of cash in the main checking account is three hundred and ninety-six thousand and forty-three dollars. Revenues exceeded expenditures by forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-four, which brought the fund balance to two million, fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine. The sewer fund, total revenue in the sewer fund is at twenty-four percent of the approved budget or four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-six. Total expenditures in the sewer fund are at sixteen percent of the approved budget for three hundred and eighty-eight thousand and eighty-six dollars. As of month end, the sewer fund's portion of cash in the main checking account is four hundred, ten thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two. Revenues exceeded expenditures by a hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and nine, which brought the fund balance to four million, two hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Did you have any questions about the June financials?
It's odd something in here and I can't find it now, sorry, what can you say? Really, the only thing that I would mention, cause I remember that we had said in a previous question on this that, um, revenues from Sky High were coming in of the category of other financing sources. Correct?
I'm sorry, repeat that please?
Okay.
A little bit slower.
I think that we had, I think that you had mentioned before that, uh, revenue from Sky High was coming in under the line item of other financing sources? Is that correct? Is that where that was coming in at?
Let me look.
Okay. Cause I think that's what you had said before, but don't quote it.
I think it's other, I'm sorry, I don't know this stuff off the top of my head sometimes. Interest, it's in, it's under interest and miscellaneous.
Okay. Um, is it possible to break that out in future? Not necessarily now, but when you turn the calendar, would it be possible to get Sky High revenue broken out into its own line item or maybe some sub-line item?
For events or something like that.
Okay, I think that would be
Okay, you know.
helpful, cause we know that it will generate millions and millions and so it would be nice to see that. Its own, its own line. I think you answered all the other questions when you were up here before, I'm sorry.
Had you off at the pass.
Yeah, well, you did a good job. I don't think I can.
Moved to approve the June financials.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve June financials, is there any more discussion?
No.
Anita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve June financials.
Um, I had another, um, question for you surrounding, um, our audit. Accounting practices recommend a review of contracts periodically. So you may think it's time to put out an RFP for our annual audit. Our current auditor, Logan and Associates, has been great to work with and has served the city very well for the last seven years. Sorry. He began auditing our financial statements in two thousand fifteen and performed the annual audit for four years. In July of two thousand nineteen, he submitted an audit proposal to perform the audit for two thousand nineteen with the option of auditing the years two thousand twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. His fee has varied from fifteen thousand, nine hundred in two thousand fifteen, twenty-one thousand, five hundred in two thousand sixteen, seventeen thousand in two thousand seventeen and fourteen thousand, five hundred for the years two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. If you are interested in, um, an RFP for our annual audit, I can obtain a list of auditors in our surrounding area, um, southern Colorado, from the state auditor or if you prefer, um, Denver, Colorado Springs also. So, um, I don't know if you want to discuss it or you want to think about it or what your thoughts are.
It's staff's recommendation that we do an RFP for a new, for an auditor.
Typically, you, um, every three to five years, if you don't change your auditor, you at least change your partner so that, um, you don't have the same person, but.
So make a motion to put out an RFP for monitor.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to have an RFP for, uh, put the, put out a bid for audit.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to put out an RFP for audit.
I have one more thing I wanted to let you know about. Because they are from me all the time. Um, I wanted to keep you informed about the change to the utility billing from the letter format back to postcards. Um, the expense related to the letter format was significant. Annual cost of postage, envelopes, paper, printing, time and labor to the city was approximately twenty-two thousand dollars for the year. Um, preparation up to readiness for mailing involved printing, folding, stuffing of about six hours for two staff members. If we, well, not if, when we go back to the postcard, um, the first one mailing will be September. Um, it will enable us to mail with a bulk permit, um, which will reduce the postage cost. Annual cost of postage, forms, printing, time and labor is estimated at fourteen thousand, five hundred. So we will save approximately seven thousand, five hundred dollars annually if we go back to the postcard when we go back to the postcard system. Um, and I also just, uh, as a FYI, um, August was the last letter format, last mailing using the letter format. Um, in that mailing for the, um, Rio Grande County Public Health Department, we included a flyer from them um, informing the customers about the availability of child and COVID vaccines. So they need to thank us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anita?
And I didn't even forget you. All right, staff proposals, reports and actions, Public Works.
Good evening. For the chief, put my glasses on and leave them on. So, good evening, counsel. Public Works world is really fluid and not to pump on a water leak we had today, but I wrote this on Monday and lots have changed between now and when I wrote it on Monday. So I will just kinda start, um, Stampede, we are grateful that Stampede has come and gone. We are really happy for the event. It is a fantastic event for our community and it really appeared that everybody all enjoyed themselves. But we, as far as staff, we are also very happy that it's over. Stampede creates a lot of work for the Public Works crews and it always seems to somewhat sneak up on us, no matter how hard we try to plan. We're always that last week, just really struggling and stressing and trying to get everything done that hasn't been done. The fire this year did not help us much, nor did the fact that we're still two people down. So we've been behind. Overall, I believe it was a success and I'm very happy with the efforts of the crew. I did wanna kinda let, um, city council understand what it does for Public Works. Our maintenance operations cease. We usually two weeks before Stampede, we gear everything towards making the town look as presentable as absolutely possible. So with this particular year, we invested in the two weeks leading up to Stampede, we invested a total of six hundred and eighty man-hours in preparation for the event and a total of a hundred and forty man-hours during the event, most of that coming from the parade. Um, the parade was overtime that equaled a hundred and thirty hours and the rest was city upkeep such as trash removal and cleaning up streets and parks and stuff. I would like to publicly thank both the police department and my own crews for all the work that goes into it. A really very special shout out to Lowell Bolt, our streets and park supervisor, for his handling of the parade. I believe that between the efforts, the sergeant Eugene Ortega and Lowell Bolt, the parades go pretty smooth anymore. They, for many, many years, they were really, really, really rough. They're still not my favorite, but I, I, I think for the most part, things went pretty well. I was only cussed at once during Saturday, so that was pretty good. So, like I said, I just wanted to personally put a thank you out to my crew. I think they do a fantastic, I also, I know the chief would echo that their department put a ton of effort into it and it is a good event, so I really appreciate everybody's work. Moving on to wastewater, our SEP, we're still working on this project. We have a tentative approval from Colorado for a solar project to offset some of the energy costs associated to the residents at the Tri-County Seniors. We've met with several different representatives and hopefully are nearing completion of a few of the outstanding items and then an official application will be submitted for approval. Good news is I think things are moving in a good direction, the positive direction for the city that that SEP will be taking care of here in short order. There are a couple of items that have been outstanding and they're getting some traction. One of the items, they wanted an energy audit from Excel as far as what the Tri-County Seniors, what kind of expenses they had as far as their energy costs, so they could do a cost analysis. That's been submitted, so that's, that's moving good and that's done. And then the one that we're currently waiting on is they need a structural engineer just to verify that the roof system with Tri-County Seniors um, center there off of Washington will meet the weight load of the solar panel system. So, um, we are working with two of our engineers and trying to wait, we're just, right now, just kinda waiting responses to see, um, what they can provide to us as in kind. So, um, the airport is the next one you heard about our bigger project. But the city also has three grants, um, from CARES and ARPA for use at the airport. These, for the most part, these, these grants have not been expensed. We did purchase a few needed light parts for the runways. So we actually do have some and I'm glad we did invest that because with the supply chain issues, trying to get certain things, we're getting quotes of twenty-seven weeks out still. So it's kinda nuts. So we're trying to invest those dollars on some infrastructure improvements that are not generally under the FAA or the state grant purposes. We are working on a purchase of a gate system to replace the non-functioning gate that is currently there. Right now, there is not any means to stop direct access to the runway from a vehicle. So we're hoping with, uh, some of those funds to, to purchase another gate, get that installed. Gigi's reached out to Garrison to kinda help me out a little bit and we've got a quote and I think they're ordering parts, so we'll get that going. We also are looking some improvements at the terminal, one of those being a furnace system. Um, the current exhaust piping for the furnace is rusted out. And so we'll be looking at replacing that. Nobody knows exactly how the furnace is, so it's in excess of twenty years, easy. So we're looking at replacing that as well. I am also planning here, within the next week and a half, to go up to Denver to a DIA sale to see if there's any decent tractors or mowers that we could purchase. This is a state-sponsored sale and as such, they offer equipment at huge discounts. Plus they do it as a they do it as a grant for this sale. This, whatever's DIA lists, or another airport lists their equipment at, DIA will cover, not, excuse me, not DIA, but the state of Colorado will cover eighty percent of that equipment cost. So if you wanted a loader, and the sale price is fifteen thousand, state of Colorado will pick up the twelve, as a local entity where we, we only pay three thousand dollars. So to get a full-size loader for three grand, it's a pretty good deal. So, I'm gonna go up there and kind of look, and kind of give you an idea. So, for example, a John Deere sixty-four oh-three tractor with a plow is listed for fifteen thousand, the state will pay us twelve thousand dollars, and then the local government will pay three. So, the catch on these purchases is they have to be used exclusively at the airport for two years, and I just attached for you guys to look at the attached, the flyer for this year's sale. There's thirty-four, thirty-three pieces of equipment for sale. So, I'll be doing that on the seventeenth and eighteenth of August. I'm still doing grants, we're looking at a few. I'm looking at what's called a federal reconnecting communities grant, whose sole purpose is to reconnect communities that may have suffered separation from previous planning efforts. Secretary Buttigieg is hoping that funds from this program, one billion dollars over the next five years, will help connect communities and bring necessary amenity to those areas that are less served. We are trying to look at those, and one of my plan on that is to complete, complete a Southern Pintata addition road, basically a service road that will go from Pintata south over to Solar Avenue and create a commercial space, plus tie that area that already is commercial in, and at the same token, to extend Chico Camino down to Lariat. Those folks that live in the Lariat subdivision have asked that road be connected for many, many years, so maybe this is an opportunity that we can do that, and allow those folks on our southern half of our town better access to Jack's Big R, and those, those areas of commercial development, so. The other grant that I'm working on is with GOCO, and I'll be soliciting with them to do a master plan for our park system. I think we need to really reach out and kind of make some priorities as to what we want to do in the future. There's a lot of folks doing a whole different things, and there's no one voice saying, hey, these are our priorities. So GOCO has a planning grant, and I think that would be a good opportunity for us as a city to kind of prioritize where our, where the money should go, and where our efforts should be driven to. So, be looking at that. Meeting with Estrella today with GOCO, they have a round that's due in August, we're not ready, so we'll go ahead and apply in November, and then those awards will be granted out first part of next year, January fifth or so next year, so. And then, if you guys will indulge me, I would like to extend one more example of the quality employees that we have here at the city. I would like to honor one of our employees, Mr. Vic Samora, and read a letter that we received, and it was addressed to city council. So, this is a letter directed to dear Mayor Becker and members of the city council from Court and Sid Weaver of Aurora, Colorado. Last week, we visited the San Luis Valley. My wife's family lived and grew up in Alamosa. Her grandfather built their house, and others in Alamosa after the Depression, and her grandparents lived there most of their lives. We frequently visit the area, and we particularly enjoy Montevista. It is a clean, friendly town with a lot of charm. We always stop by to enjoy one of your parks, to either have ice cream, a picnic lunch, or eat at one of your restaurants. Last week, we brought our tandem bicycle to enjoy many of the paved farm roads that crisscross the valley, and the many fields of potatoes. It's nice and flat with low traffic volume, and we can get a great workout of the fifty to sixty miles pretty easily. We've even done a hundred miles on a day when we were a little younger. Anyway, last week, we planned to park our car at a park and then have a picnic lunch after the ride. Our first stop was on the east side of town at the skate park, but the restrooms were locked. So we asked a female officer if another park would have open restrooms. She indicated Chapman Park. So we parked at Chapman, used the restrooms before our ride. After the ride, we returned to have our picnic. The Martinez Pavilion was excellent. As we prepared to leave, a city employee named Vic drove up to check on the restrooms. He was very friendly and easy to speak with. He explained sadly why the other restrooms were locked due to vandalism, and he told us he was sorry, but he had no choice. He also said that he had arrived at Chapman to clean the restrooms there. He also noted that the door to the men's restroom was slated to be fixed at some point. He was very courteous, and gave a very nice description of the other parks, and was obviously proud of the facilities of Montevista. He was very positive and enthusiastic about his work. You can be proud of Vic and his work ethic. He is a great spokesman of our town. We will tell our friends to be sure and stop by to see your town and then enjoy what it has to offer. Be sure to mention Vic to a supervisor and congratulate him on being a great diplomat for your own town. Thank you, Court and Sid Weaver. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we need to frame a copy of that. Maybe let Vic have the original to frame it in his house.
Can you, Mayor, council?
So I'm just gonna kind of do a quick overview of Stampede. So for the most part, it was Rob's right. I think the biggest pain that we have is, shouldn't say pain, the biggest lift is the parade. That thing just drives me crazy, but it, it's between Eugene and Lowell, they've got that down and make it easy, but I still, the parade is just a lot of work. So, I think this, this is pretty, pretty awesome. Considering all the people that were there and everything, we only had five arrests at all that were associated with Stampede, so I think that's pretty outstanding, and I'm not gonna say that we're gonna take the credit for that. I think a lot of that has to do with the planning and the layout and stuff that Stampede has done, the Stampede Committee. One thing we talked about last night, we did an after-action with us, Public Works, Stampede Committee and everything, and one of the things, the way the carnival was laid out, it was kind of nice, because it really opened it up. I mean, it was, seemed like it was bigger, but what that really kind of helped Stampede in a lot of ways is, it didn't allow crowds to like get jammed up together, and then you get everybody like jammed in a couple of rides and stuff like that, so that went really well. But again, only five arrests, considering all the people and stuff, and that, that's, that's pretty outstanding, and, and nothing serious, just, you know, some shenanigans and, and things like that. So, carnival security, last year, we only had two officers assigned to carnival duty. This year, when we contacted the owner of the carnival, John Ring, and said, look, we think we need a minimum of four. He countered and said, well, I'd rather have six, and he said he would pay for the security. So we had six, although we didn't have enough people, so we, Rio Grande Sheriff's Office jumped in and helped us, and I tell you, the carnival is a huge lift. That's probably, that's probably the biggest risk in the, in the sense that there's, you know, it's not really secured and stuff, so people can come and go and however, and I think, you know, there was some social media threats just prior to, to carnival that, I'll say Detective Cisneros did an amazing job. He put in a ton of hours when we first got that threat, and we had that completely wrapped up before the, before the carnival and stuff, so kudos to him. Him and Sergeant Martinez did an amazing job in that. But again, carnival, we had no issues in, with carnival at all, other than parking, and we've talked about that, parking is, parking is parking down there, there's just not, there's no place to put all those people. Concert night, again, we did the full screening of those coming in, and that was at the request of the Stampede Committee. We did use private security this year to help with that and stuff, and again, Stampede picked that up, and that seemed to go, for the most part, pretty well. There are a few adjustments that we need to make, and we, we've had that in the after-action last night, a few other changes that we're going to make. The dances, again, very few issues doing the dance. I think we had one assault the entire, and that was like, again, just like last year, it was like at one o'clock on Saturday night, about fifteen minutes before it's over, and then we had that. So we thought we were gonna escape, but we ended up with one, one assault under that, so pretty good. And again, I think one of the big things is, you're, I, I've had a lot of comments from people since, that they felt safe and secure, and they were bringing their family. I had a guy from Center who grew up in Center, and he said, I remember coming to Stampede as a kid, and he said, I stopped coming when I was about seventeen, because he goes, all we did was fight, and now he's like forty, and he said, so he was like, you know what? I think it's time that, you know, give this a try, so they came Saturday during the day to the carnival, and he said, we felt so safe and so secure there with my wife and my family, that he's like, I'm just going to, you know, they came back a couple of the evenings and stuff, and, stuff, so he said, he felt that safe and secure there, so. It, it's become a good family event, and that's what we want it to be, is a good family. And Stampede Committee, they, they owe, we owe them a lot of the thanks for that, because they really put their heart and souls into it and stuff, so it was good. So going forward, we're working on training. We're gonna, with Sky High as a whole, we're going to come up with a really comprehensive security plan for that, but what I don't want it to be is over the top, that it makes it seem like a police state. We want it to be that people feel safe and secure there, but that you're not, you know, that it's a police state that you're feeling comfortable there, so we're gonna work on that. We've already got some training and stuff that we're gonna work on that. On the average, each officer worked around a hundred and ten hours during that two-week period and stuff. I know it was a lot, with, most of them with one or two days off in that two-week period, so they put in a ton of hours. You know, some work the majority of the week before, whatever, because we have to cover shifts and stuff like that, so. Other than that, that's about it, unless you guys have questions, you know, just a lot of other usual things going on, but for the most part, pretty good.
I, I noticed the EMTs on four-wheelers out there at the carnival. That was the first time I ever seen that. I thought that was pretty awesome. What I mean, because you just, you don't know, what I mean, some people can fall, some people can fall off the ride or whatever, but that was the first time I seen that.
The EMTs? Yeah, they had, they had some four-wheelers, and then we have two four-wheelers, and we use that mostly for the carnival, for the parking lot, because, you know, that parking back there is just a disaster. So, but we've got plans, we're already working on plans for that, but they have the EMTs, and just makes it quicker for them to get around and stuff like that, so it's awesome. Yeah, it's good. Any other questions?
Yeah, what day do you get the Stanley Cup?
I wish. When I go to Finland.
Chief, we needed to, I wanted you to mention about National Night Out.
Oh, yes. I even had it on my notes. National Night Out is August twenty-fourth at six PM at Chapman Park. We'd love to have you guys there. We're not gonna ask you to cook or do anything, just go and shake hands and kiss babies. That's all you need to do, and we will take care of the rest of it. Robbie Martinez is putting that together, and he always does a really good job with that, so, August twenty-fourth at six PM.
August twenty-fourth?
Yeah, it's a Wednesday.
Do you have a press release ready for that, or a graphic or an ad?
We will, first part of next week, and I'll get that on Facebook, because you guys are great about forwarding that and stuff, so we'll get that out.
I've been looking for it, that's why I'm asking, I've, I've been watching, waiting for it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that out. In fact, I'll make sure. I had something from last year that I was, but yeah, we'll get that out next week. Any other questions?
Do you have the possibility of getting the helicopter and all the fun things?
He's working on that. Yep, he's working on that. I think he's gonna see if he can get Elmo Swatine. There's a bunch of others that, other groups that have asked to come participate in it, so, yeah, it's always a good time.
And then the K-nine?
K-nine?
Golf tournament?
Golf tournament? Oh yeah, that's the twenty-seventh. I'm not a golfer, so I would not be golfing. I'll help cook, that's fine. Anything else? No.
Thank you, sir, chief. Sky High report.
All right, Stampede, that was fun. Got to see all the behind-the-scenes this year. I learned a lot, there's a few things that will change for next year, but overall, I think it was a really great event. Thank you for everybody that was involved. There was a lot of hands that were out at Sky High, taking care of plants and cleaning and making sure we had a crosswalk, and patrolling, and making it safe and secure. I do want to say a thank you to the flower market, as well as the Chamber of Commerce and Montevista Co-op for providing all the beautiful flowers that they put out there. And they have actually, the Co-op has, or not Co-op, the Chamber has been out there maintaining them for us, so they come out and water them and prune them, and make sure that they stay nice and pretty. That's been fantastic out there. Some of our rough numbers, I don't have exact numbers from the Stampede Committee just yet, but Wednesday, we probably had roughly a thousand people at the carnival. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, between the concert, the rodeo, the dance, and the carnival, we had about seven thousand people on property each day. And then Sunday was a little bit less, just between the rodeo and the carnival, we had about thirty-five hundred on property that day, so, nice and busy and keeping us going. And again, it was such a huge, huge, huge team effort to, to get that going, so thank you to everybody that helped us out. We put in a few, few overtime hours, you know, not too much, so, keeping us going with that. Coming up, let's see, we just finished all the epoxy in the restrooms, except for one, they ran out on one of the restrooms, so we have one of the women's restroom on the east side that still needs to be finished, but that was a huge addition, made it a lot easier to clean up after Stampede. Yeah, we'll just leave it at that. I just got news today that our subcontractor Beacon, that does all the AV equipment, they will be finishing our AV the last week in September, so all of our equipment will be fully functional as far as AV the last week in September, so we're really excited about that. They've been great with our temporary setup, but it's time to be fully done. Right now, we are just getting prepared for the SLB Fair, which starts Saturday and goes for eight full days. So that is a lot of kids, a lot of animals, and a lot of fun that we are getting ready for. And then August slows down a little bit for us. After fair, we only have fourteen events so far for August, which is a nice needed break for us. I just heard today as well, from our IT department, that they were able to talk with AT&amp;T and get us three free repeaters, so basically, it's gonna boost our service for cell phones out there at Sky High, so they are gonna work with Verizon as well, and see if they'd be willing to match that, or see if they'd be willing to do something as well. I didn't hear too many complaints over Stampede, but I did hear a couple that cellphone service was a little spotty, so hopefully that'll help us with some of our larger events and get us going with that. And then I guess the last thing I have is, we are already starting to book up for 2023, so as of right now, I am down to, I think, two weekends in June that are left available, and then a couple weekends in August, but other than that, our summers are almost completely booked year in advance, so. We are already booking straight ahead. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, or comments?
I have one comment, question. I think Tuesday morning is what I'm shooting for, to get the cases delivered, the showcases, and I know fair's going on. Can we get into that east end off of Sherman? Because our, my goal is to get in there before they set up for fair, to get them through the doors and push them all the way back on.
In the event center side, or in the conference center side?
Oh, just gonna try to get in on the event side.
To get them to the conference center side.
To go all the way down. I don't know how much of that fair is gonna use, because we're using the conference center as well, right?
They are. They're not using a ton of the conference center, and it's kind of sporadic when they are using it, so there's potential that we could get that done on Tuesday morning.
I figured that'd be a good time, too, to, if we can get it I figured that'd be a good time too to, if we can get it from point A to point B, then have Rob or Fair Kids are always willing to help, so.
Absolutely.
So, Tuesday morning.
Okay. Tuesday morning.
Not yet, Rob. It's like one of those deals where it's time to poo or get off the pot. Been putting this off for two weeks, now we're gonna do it.
We will be ready.
Okay.
And Stephanie, what is the status of the basketball and volleyball equipment?
Yes, so we did get the, um, volleyball nets and poles and all of the goodies that go with the volleyball equipment in. Um, our basketball hoops were pushed back. Um, last I heard, they would be shipped out the end of August. Um, so we're still trying to push for some of that. Um, they are looking into some other options for us to see if we can do something temporary, or if we wanna switch and do something different. Um, we're still working with them on some of that information, but.
That was the volleyball hoops that we had ordered forever ago? Those the same ones, or is this another?
No, they're the same ones.
Correct.
We did get our scoreboards in today. We're slowly, slowly accumulating all the things we need. So, it's a process.
Thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Recreation. Yes, sir. Good evening. Uh, I know I was supposed to turn in a report on Monday, but I was getting prepared for basketball camp and some issues that we run into, and I didn't have time to turn it in, so you don't have any pockets, so I'll make up this for you guys.
Of course I do. Thank you.
All right, um, so I know, uh, kind of Gigi spoke to me and to give a little more detail, uh, report, and also the last couple meetings, just gonna come in and tell what we're doing and what's happening and, I don't know, out the door. So, uh, today, I will, I'm gonna go into a little more detail on some stuff that I was asked for. Um, but, uh, you know, a- at the same time, I thought maybe it would be a good timing to go back and just do a refresher of how parkour recreations work. Uh, as I mentioned in the past, and I think I've mentioned a couple of times, you probably, some of you remember that, but recreations, uh, the programs are like in a cycle, uh, sports of events that go up through, throughout the, the year. And every sport's about a month to a month and a half, uh, four weeks to six weeks, uh, long. Uh, the calendar starts, the calendar, of course, starts in January and goes all the way through December, and then it just goes again. Uh, we work together with other parkour recreations organizations like Sergeant, Center, Suatch, Sangre, Creed, Delnor, and Alamosa. And in some locations, we have teams from Conejos County, Pagosa Springs, Leida, and Gannison. Uh, the programs that we offer, uh, are for boys and girls, and it goes from ages five to twelve, or first grade through seventh grade. Uh, and I am proud to mention that Manavista is actually the only one, uh, that offers basketball for pre-K and K. We go that level. Um, of course, all the directors from every town, we get together, we come out with, uh, what we create is the S L B youth sports bylaws and rules, uh, that we have to follow in order to participate in those events, because all the kids from Manavista, they, all the kids from Sergeant and Delnor and Alamosa, and so all the directors get together to come out with some kind of, uh, bylaws and agreements to how we're gonna organize those sports and how we expect parents to act in those games, and how we're gonna handle if, if that, something happens during those events and all that stuff. So, every year, we get together after every season. If there's any problems, uh, the directors communicate with the director, like, for example, if Manavista encounters a problem in one of our games here in Manavista against, uh, one of the teams in Center, we contact Center Director, we tell them what happened, they investigate it, and then we come to a conclusion what we're gonna do and how we're gonna follow that. Before I start with the total report, uh, I wanna do something that I, I don't think I have ever done, and it's read the vision statement for our department and the mission statement for our department. Our mission is to strive to develop and create leadership of opportunities to grow by providing and offering recreational programs and facilities to the youth and adults while seeking and be inclusive and adaptable to the needs of this community. And our mission is to provide high-quality, affordable, and diverse, uh, recreational opportunities for the residents of Manavista and the Sun Luis Valley, and to enhance, enhance the life in our community through individual and family services, community programs, and partnership with other organizations. And so, with that said, you know, that is the main focus, trying to provide as many, as many opportunities to the youth, involve every youth that we can, every adult that we can, because not everybody likes sports, or not everybody likes soccer, not everybody likes basketball. So we try to bring different things, and not everybody can afford to put their kids in, in sports. And so we try to help as much as we can with that. Uh, sometimes when we run registrations, uh, let's say the registration's forty-five dollars to register a kid for basketball. Sometimes the parent pays fifty and they donate the five dollars to go towards somebody that needs money to register the kids, and that's how it's been, been used. With that said, uh, attached to this report, I, uh, added a calendar that, that I created, that, um, kinda gives you an idea of what course, and that'll be the last page on the packet. Uh, it tells you, uh, the season when we run in those programs, uh, it tells you the cost that we charge, uh, the sport and divisions that we run in. When we open registrations, when we close registrations, and when we start pretty much with the games, practices, and when it's finished. And as you can see, you know, from, uh, let's say, for example, now we are in August, October, uh, we just, uh, finishing. We just finished baseball, which I'll get into a little more detail in a little bit. Uh, and we be, we have actually flag football, tackle football, and volleyball registrations opened right now for, to start with that, like the end of August. Um. Those, uh, flag football usually first and second grade. Uh, there's a new, uh, in their last meeting that we had, they were to talk about maybe opening more to thirty-four and fifty-six flag football, cause there are some communities that don't have enough, uh, kids to play tackle football, or they prefer to play flag football than tackle football. So we're just gonna expanding that option to other communities. We, at this point, we're just gonna stick with tackle football for those ages and keep flag football for first and second only. Uh, maybe next year, we'll look into do both. We don't know yet. Uh. Just finishing with baseball, I'm gonna go back to my report here. Uh, during baseball season, we had well, let me go back a little bit. On, on the, on the schedule that you see there, with all the sports that we offer, uh, you know, we can take into consideration that we also host other events, uh, such as the Adult Basketball League, the Adult Volleyball League. We try to do the five, uh, five K run every year in July, which we can do this year. Um, we usually do the, uh, Family Fun Skate Night also, Daddy and, Daddy Da- uh, Daughter Dance and the Cornhole. And as you can see, those in red is because we still, right now, we don't, it's a pending. We don't know where we are with that, and see where we're gonna have that. And like I mentioned before too, after, after every season, uh, during, you know, let's say, for example, between basketball and, uh, soccer, every time that we finish with one sport, it's time to collect and contact all the parents to collect equipment, and then getting ready to find that equipment for the next sport. And so, between those two weeks that we don't have any games, that's what we're doing. Um, either orange uniforms or handing out uniforms. Uh, let's see. Uh, numbers for baseball. Uh, this season was from June to July, uh, for the twenty-twenty-two baseball, we had a total of ninety-nine, ninety-nine kids registered between T-ball to softball. We had a total of twenty-four kids registered for T-ball, uh, that gave us two teams, and that was twelve players per team. Uh, we had twenty-five kids for machine pitch, two teams. We divided them into two teams, one of twelve and one of fifteen players per team. Uh, for fast pitch, we had twenty-five kids, uh, which, we divided them into two teams. We had fourteen in one and eleven on the other. So, out of the ninety-nine kids, eighty-one attended, uh, that attended or registered for these are from Manavista schools. Eight are homeschool or online class, that's what they said. And then, and I said, because we use, they usually put that in the registration, and that's how we know and break it down. And then eight were from other towns, uh, could be Sergeant, Center, Alamosa, that come to our town to, to play those programs. Uh, as far as the travel, uh, travel baseball, uh, I was asked to go a little more into detail in, in this. Um, I didn't know the history, the whole history of how it started, but I knew, kinda, kinda knew who was behind when all this started. So, when I was doing this report, uh, and sorry, you know, I was gonna do it in between breaks at the basketball camp. Um, I emailed this person to kinda give me, you know, history of how the travel sports started. And I didn't get into, I, I was actually heading over here. But, uh, I had to put something down just for the knowledge that I had. So. I knew, or kinda knew the, they kinda, a group of parents and a high school coach started this youth travel, I guess, teams, and back in twenty-fourteen or so. Um, and my understanding is that they got together and they pitched in some of their time or money to have their kids play. And the reason they did this is because Manavista Recreation did not offer any programs for those age groups. We're talking fourteen to sixteen years old. In around twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, to the best of my knowledge, Kingy Alcando, which was our, uh, assistant, a while back ago, uh, here in the city, and Jake Muller organized, uh, and put together, uh, what they call the Manavista Youth Traveling Sports. Uh, and I can, uh, she actually sent me the email, like I said, when I was coming here. Let me see if I can find it. So I'm just gonna end quote, she said, "We began travel baseball in twenty-fifteen because we noticed that the youth, the young men, uh, who were in between the grades of middle school and high school, we had no summer programs. The boys were too young to jo- to join the high school prep and too old to play recreation. We began by playing local and then eventually branch out to tournaments and travel more. Um, we are not a sponsor or under the umbrella of anyone, so we need to apply for our own LLC and tax exemption so that we could get sponsors. We also didn't have a facility to participate or to practice, uh, uh, so that we so we, uh, had, uh, we had to acquire our insurance. So, the, I hate, again, the whole purpose was because they were trying to reach those kids, the age group that had nothing to do during the summer. And if we know that age group is a critical age group, where if we don't keep them busy or doing something productive, they could easily go and do something destructive. So my involvement on the, on the traveling teams came when I got hired here in twenty-sixteen as a parkour recreations director. I knew and understand that we didn't have any programs to offer for the age group. But at the same time, I didn't wanna just go and take over those programs, cause there was something already, unfortunately, going. Uh, in twenty-nineteen, I think it was in twenty-nineteen, um, well, let me go back. When I moved my son back, when I moved my son to Manavista Schools from Center, um, he was invited to play travel baseball. And with that, they asked me if I wanted to help out with coaching. Uh, so I offered and I helped out. Knowing how around and how much those kids were enjoying, that they had something to do, I knew that we had to do something here. Do something to reach out to that age group. So, in, in the late twenty-nineteen, I reached out to my supervisor, which was the city manager at that time, and I asked him if there was anything that we can do to bring those programs, uh, and I guess adopt them and have them run through the city. Uh, we spoke for a while. He said he was gonna talk to the city council, but in the meantime, he said that we could, we would be able to maybe help out with whether it's, uh, I keep that in here, time, uh, putting some of my time, some of the office time, uh, yet being by organizing, calling, and setting up games for them, um, setting up umpires for them, equipment, or anything that we can do. So then we created what the, what it was called, um, the, we added a, um, line item, was added to the budget, which is, uh, team programs, and that's what it was gonna be used for, for these programs. That's where this money was gonna come for, to help out with these programs. I think in twenty-nineteen, that's when, uh, we started talking, but then pandemic happened, and I think everything was kinda dropped off. You know, we dropped the ball somewhere there that, and then other things happened, but it was never completed. We never, uh, I guess we never had a chance to come over before the council and talk about that, but the line item was there, and that's what we've been using to help those programs. Um, with that said, and I have an agreement report, uh, I would like for the council to consider, talk about it, and see if there's something that the city can do and adopt those programs here, because we do not, I mean, like I said, that age group, it is a critical age that we need to keep these kids busy, and we need to keep them doing something productive, or they'll be on the streets. With that said, as of right now, um, like I mentioned earlier, our department's getting ready for tackle football, flag football, and volleyball. Uh, I know that Gigi asked me to bring some exact numbers, but our registrations are still open. And so I just came to the office now, because today was the last day of our basketball camp. We started on Tuesday, which I, that's why I didn't have my report ready. Um. We had planned this camp since last year, and right when I checked in with the school to see if we still good with the facility, cause Sky High was not, we didn't have the baskets in time, so I know that we had already talked to the school, and they said that we couldn't use the facility. Uh, there was some miscommunication over there, as far as whether, whether we're gonna be, be able to use the facility or not. And so, in order, we didn't wanna cancel this camp, because there was people coming out of town, like I said, I explained to Gigi, uh, from state, out of state. And they already had reservations in hotels for those three days or two days that we're gonna stay. And it was just gonna be more of a hassle to cancel than trying to find a facility. So, I contacted Center, Center Schools, and they were, um, kind to let us use their facility last minute. Uh, we find a gym like Monday afternoon, and so we just sent a massive email to all the participants, and we let them know that the, the camp was moved from Manavista to Center. I think out of the fifty-five kids that registered, fifty-two or fifty-three showed up. Uh, after we moved it, I think only two said, "We can go." And so, um, so anyway, when I got, today was the last day of the camp, uh, we have a successful camp. We had fifty-two, fifty-three kids show up. Uh, we had three volunteers to help with the camp, uh, and then myself, uh, Lauren, I was gonna call her Kim, Lauren and Trevor were also there, and, uh, so what we do is that we break it down into teams, into groups, and then we use every basket. There's six ba- six baskets, six, six baskets in the, in the gym, and we using every basket. six, six baskets and, uh, and the gym, and we using every basket. And so we have to have a coach in every, in every, in every group to keep an eye on, to make sure that they're not messing around, get hurt, and things like that. So anyway, when I got here, I tried to pull a quick report of how many kids we have register. Uh, and those numbers don't surprise me, they're a little low because usually for volleyball and flag football, we don't start getting kids registered until school starts. So, but with, for volleyball, between third and fourth and fifth and sixth, we only have nine. For, um, flag football, we have ten. For tackle football, between third and fourth and fifth and sixth grade, we have twenty-two right now. And the registration's still open, they don't close until the fifteenth, and for volleyball and flag football and for tackle football, they don't close until the nineteenth. So we still have plenty of time to get more kids, I know there were gonna, there's a lot more kids coming. And, uh, I already talked to the schools about if we're gonna be able to use the facilities there to host tackle football games and, and the schools to use the facility for volleyball, and they approved that. So I think we are good with that. Uh, let me just give you a little more here about the basketball camp. Like I mentioned, we had fifty-three kids. Fourteen were from Montevista. The rest were from around Colorado, like La Jara, Sanford, Howard, I don't know where Howard, Colorado is. Manasa, Antonito, Blanca, Alamosa, Mos- Masca, Center, Minkos, Aurora, and Netrop?
Netrop.
You know where's that? I don't know what that is. Bellnor, Solida and Viunavista. Uh, we also had a few kids from Ojo Caliente in New Mexico and Espanola. Um, and last but not least, you know, we have a, we're gonna have a cornhole tournament coming in August twentieth during the, where do you go? During the, uh, um, VR Fest and the car show that there's gonna happen here at Chapman Park. And so I don't, I haven't had any registrations online yet, but most of those people registered right on the day of, so I'm not worried about. Um, we did have a broken door at the vault tower during the carnival. Somebody put in, put one of the doors in, I, I, we're thinking to get out of the rain, it was the last day, the day that it rained, I think it was Sunday. Um, we were able to secure the door and close it again, uh, nothing was stolen, so we just filed a report with, uh, Montevista PD just to, for insurance purposes and, uh, good. I think that's all I have for now, if you guys have any questions, concerns, anything for me, I'm here to answer.
Thank you, I'm.
You're welcome.
Thanks, I'm. You're definitely busy, keep you in trouble.
Uh, or in trouble sometimes, because I'm never home. But it's good.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
City manager report.
Oh, good evening, council. I'll start with the bad news first. Um, we got, it's not really that bad, but I'm gonna ask you to approve a bill. The, um, one of the properties that the U R A owned was one seventeen Adams. And as you all may remember, we sold that property and closed on it back in February. Well, the Rio Grande County Assessor's Office, or Treasurer's Office, rather, um, have sent us a bill for thirteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. And this is for the back taxes for when the property had been sold to Three Guys Farms in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. They don't have, we don't have a way to get a hold of, of them. They turn the property back to U R A and, um, and so I need you to consider approving this so we can pay it. I sent a letter to the county commissioners, they had a meeting yesterday, and they are not, they claim that they can't waive, they can't waive it for us. And I said, "Well, can't you," I said, "ask if you will waive at least the interest?" Because the interest on this for the two years is a hundred and sixty-two dollars. And, um, they haven't responded to me regarding that yet, but yeah, I know in Alamosa County, we used to waive interests just to get the, the properties paid for, so still finding out about it. So if you all would consider paying that.
Why, why would it fall on us to pay, on the city to pay that? If it was a U R A building, why does it fall on the city to pay, pay that?
So it doesn't, I mean, I guess we can refuse. It's just going to, it'll transfer then the full balance to the new owner, and that owner didn't have the, um, the new owner wasn't.
So it's not their bill, it's not their bill either? It's Three Guys' bill, right?
Correct.
Who is responsible for collecting?
Well, the Treasurer's Office, but it probably works like it does with our water bills, and it would transfer to the new owner. But the new owner, when we sold it, didn't know that they had this outstanding property tax.
Well, I know the new owners would not want the city to be paying it. I also know it's not their bill. I know it's not our bill.
When you buy a property, you buy the back taxes.
You do buy the back taxes?
Do.
Oh, yeah. If you're aware of them. Can you be?
It doesn't matter if you're aware of them or not, you bought it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Is there no deed of trust or anything that goes with U R A properties? No title search, no, no nothing that shows that, does the U R A not know what's going on with their buildings and that this building comes with these back tax?
I can't say that any of that ever came up when we were doing all this because we had liens against them when we were purchasing property to get them, the blighted properties, to get rid of them. And some of them were, had back taxes on them and we paid it to tie it up. So we knew there was back taxes on them when we got them, so.
I just think it would be in good faith for these transactions to be, you know, hey, like, for example, this one was actually approved last fall, it just took until February to find the deed. Um, I, I don't even go there, but it would have shown, been a show of good faith to have been upfront with them, said, "Hey, you know, we, we, we like your plan, we're gonna give you this building. By the way, it comes with X amount of, of back taxes owed, is that okay with you?" At least that way they know, and they're not just getting a bill out of the blue. And the city's just not getting a bill out of the blue, there, there, there needs to be a little bit of good faith effort there.
How much was it again?
You know?
Thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred?
Mm-hmm.
What should the bill themselves for?
Yeah. One dollar.
And it's not a, again, I've talked, I've talked to the new owners, this is not a make or break. I'm actually the one that brought this to Gigi's attention, just because I didn't want people paying a bill that wasn't, that wasn't there. I wasn't saying it wasn't theirs, I just wanted to confirm that it was their bill because they were never told anything about it. I mean, they're not gonna walk away from the park, from the, from the property for, what, thirteen hundred something, fourteen, somewhere, somewhere. They're not gonna walk away from the property for that, but they want this too bad. It just seems a little, um, irresponsible that they weren't informed that this was part of the deal. I mean, yeah, they got a great deal for a building for a dollar, that's great. But look at the building, it would've cost us forty thousand to tear it down. So.
So are we gonna pay it?
I don't know.
That's what it comes down to, right?
It's either we're gonna pay it or they're gonna pay it. We need to clean up our communication.
Did we know that it, that it's sitting out there?
Yeah. No.
How much was that again? Thirteen?
Fifty-eight, thirty-seven.
Thirteen.
Why wouldn't it bother the U R A to pay it?
U R A doesn't have any money. And the U R A is part of the city.
Can I write down that number again? Thirteen fifty-eight, twenty-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven? Thirty-seven.
I was gonna shortchange in ten cents.
Well, I'd make a motion that the city go ahead and pay that, and get, get it going and let's get it done for thirteen fifty-eight, thirty-seven. Second.
And moving in second to go ahead and have the city approve to pay the back taxes on one seventeen Adams, is there any more discussion? I have, Gene, do we have any legal way to go back on those guys to try to collect if we can find them?
I can find them.
I already know where they are.
Okay. They can be found.
You may, I was trying to, I was trying to listen to all this without any background on the whole thing, so a little bit of disadvantage there, but you may, you may have some recourse against the prior owner. I, I'd have to take a look at that, I, I really can't give you an off the cuff answer about that. So I have, you know, I, I, I guess all this is reflected in, did anybody do, uh, when it was conveyed, did anybody do a title search or check the taxes or anything like that?
That's what you do.
So, generally, that's gonna be reflected.
Yeah. So all that, let's see, trying to remember, because when the bank, Rio Grande, Rio Grande Bank had it, and then they gave it to the U R A for development. And then the U R A had it and the three guys made their proposal on it and we went with it. And then that's when their investors, everything went defunct and they all pulled back out and they gave it back to U R A. So then these folks chose to get it, so it was passed on to them.
The tax lien just stays with the property, you know, through the conveyance as general.
So if we do this, it's a good faith thing.
And going forward, I think we need to.
Yeah.
Let people know.
Okay. Any more discussion? You need it.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protopsikola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve to pay the back taxes of one seventeen Adams for one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents with four yeas and one nae.
Check into that, Gene, and let me know. Thank you, sir.
Kevin Wilkins, I don't know if you guys saw in the newspaper, but he resigned as the director of the Development Resource Group in Alamosa, representing the valley. And they have appointed Ann Jones, who was the, their CFO or, um, yeah, chief financial officer, as the new director. So I think Kevin has already, or is about to leave town, so he's gone. I attended barley days that Coors put on, got a nice tour of the, of our barley plant out here north of town, and then went out to their field days and toured their, their farm and, and had a really nice discussion with them and, and so, um, it was very interesting, I've never been over there to do that. Um, I saw Armando today with, um, I can't remember his last name, the weed guy.
Ross.
Thank you, Armando Ross today. They, uh, have not sprayed the weeds out at Sky High yet, so they will be doing that soon. Now that, as soon as the fair gets over, Rob. But the one thing that he, and I didn't get a chance to tell you this yet, chief, that I found a little disturbing, is he said that when he was out here on the, the Colette Trail, that there was a man, like a homeless man, sleeping in the weeds. And so I guess, uh, from time to time, you guys are just gonna have to take a walk out there and get on the bicycle and see who's.
Or the scooter.
Or a scooter or, or something. Um, and his, he just brought up, you know, the concern of the potential of he, of accosting a walker or a child or something, which, um, since it's just kinda wide open out there. I asked Gene and the mayor to attend the San Luis Valley Board of Commissioners meeting here a couple of weeks ago. They were trying to get, um, the main focus is, is that we wanted to hear what was going on with the railroad and the bankruptcy. And I believe by now, all of the bids have been turned in, so we'll find out if that, um, sale, if they're gonna approve a, a buyer on that. One hundred percent of all the barley is shipped out of here by rail. And then in addition, taters use it, fertilizer companies use it, so we can't afford to lose the railroad here in Montevista. And then they also talked about, um, a coordinated effort between the counties, so the municipalities need to have the buy-in as well to do some sort of a joint ten forty-one powers, which is, um, around the whole exporting of water out of the San Luis Valley. And so Gene or Dale may have a little bit more detail on that, but there are some attorneys that, that they're looking at actually signing on that have this expertise, so that the language is good with the idea that if all six of us sign, all six of the counties, and then, then the municipalities support the counties in doing this, that maybe we can derail future water attempts. So they're working on that. Um, I sent, I think I heard from all my staff and only one council member regarding October first as a retreat. And it would be, that is a Saturday, it would be for council and all the directors. Um, I'm thinking like an eight to three and have a facilitator come in and do some sort of, um, goal setting. What do, which direction does council want? Um, staff to go in for twenty twenty-three, talk about the budget, and, um, so I've got a really good guy, but he can't do it October the first. I have not checked with staff if everybody could do it on October the eighth, but I'll throw that one out there as well, but those are both Saturdays. I, I really.
Put him down.
Huh?
So put him down.
Put you down? I need a commitment from all five of you. This has got to be a, a true group event so that we're all.
For which date, the first or the eighth?
Well, and I'm asking you guys, you wanna do the first or the eighth? Staff has already responded that the first works.
I'll do either day.
I can make, can you do this? We can do eight?
The eighth would, the eighth would be better for me, but I can make the first work.
I can do the eighth, too?
Just do both.
First works.
It's Saturday, so I have no plans at all, any Saturday, so we're, that's, that's open.
Jason?
Yeah, I'll be out of town.
On which day?
Actually, I'm gonna be out of town on both days.
Just came up, huh?
I'm taking my wife on vacation.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then let me find, maybe, what about the first Saturday in November?
On game.
Your, your game?
Sure.
What's the first Saturday?
November fifth.
What is it?
November fifth.
Aren't you five gonna be around? No?
I'll be in the.
Same one.
I wanna be in the bag.
When are you back?
The seven, eight.
I thought I was good by going out to October. All right, I will send out a doodle poll, you guys all know how to open it up and respond to a doodle poll. Okay, all you do is you hit the open. Just type in your name. Mayor. And put a check mark on the dates that we give, and we'll.
I can't figure that out on a card, man.
Okay, yeah, well, I'll send out some other dates and see what we can come up with. And then finally, I want to say huge kudos to our staff for Stampede. It really was a very successful event, I'm really proud of everyone. I'm disappointed not one of them mentioned Monty the Cowboy, which was so awesome.
I saw him doing the limbo.
Several times.
Dale said, hey, I'm gonna walk with you guys the second time, or the second day, and that's when I sent out the email to all of you to say, or text message to say, hey, why don't you walk with us? And I think we need to, you should all consider doing that next year. It was a great opportunity for the public to see you all. We can throw a, a chair, or two, or three, or five chairs along, on the trailer, if you guys don't wanna walk. But, um, it was nice listening to people compliment the city, and have, have a presence in the parade besides our Public Works and P D, that have the presence around us, around the outside of the, the parade. So I'm just really proud of everybody and how they came together. We did a, had a very proud moment for Montavista in celebrating the hundredth year.
Well, I'm proud of Monty and his manners, he bowed to the, to the, um, onlookers. Was very polite. If he could just remember to take his hat off, but he's a cowboy, so we gotta let him go with that. Cause they don't take their hats off, so.
All right, any questions, concerns, thoughts? Alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeezy. Mr. Orand?
I'd like to thank Public Works for fixing the guys around in front of my house today. Appreciate it.
Were you the one that dug up the line?
No, whoever's putting in the fiber optic has hit my phone line one day and hit my water line the next. I really appreciate that the Public Works got right out. Phone company didn't come out to the next day, so.
Good. Victor?
Um, I really don't have a whole lot, um, I do just kinda wanna kinda reiterate what Dale kinda says, a lot of the times is, keep an eye out. Watch out, watch your, watch for your neighbors. I had somebody going through my neighborhood over and over and over and over and over again. And I talked to Chief one day and I told him, hey, I got this person, just, I know they're thieving, I know it, I can see it, and I know who they are, he tells me, call us, I'm like, alright. They go and they pick it up, I'm like, yes, thank you. I mean, it's like, it's great, um, to have them, you know what I mean? Because there's so many people out there that are just up to no good, you know, and, and, uh, it's just, you know, it just does your neighbor good when, when they know that they have somebody over here that says, hey, um, I called you because there was somebody, you know, walking around over here, and they're just looking out for each other. I think it's a great thing that we look out for each other, you know what I mean? Because if you don't, um, things end up missing, you know what I mean? And it's, it's, it's like, my, my, my reason, you know, is like, what if that was my kid? But I mean, what if that was, like, this woman taking all these toys and all these things? And I'm like, what if that was my kid? What if, those are like, all the toys that I paid for, I worked hard for that, and somebody's just taking it, you know? So keep an eye out, um, hear, hear dogs barking. Hope, get you some floodlights or some motion sensor lights or something, you know? Um, I think it's just important to be there for your neighbors, so. That's all.
Thank you, Victor. Mr. Foster?
Tuesday night, five to seven, Grace and Mercy will have its monthly community supper. We will be serving tacos. Come join us from five to seven, don't cook dinner, come do dinner on us.
Thank you, sir. Martha?
Well, I'm gonna reiterate what everybody else has said, that, that staff and police department and city staff, and, I mean, Eric, just Public Works, Sky High, everybody, did a fantastic job for, for Stampede. I think it went as smoothly as an event that size could possibly go. It was fantastic. It was the hundredth anniversary, and I was extremely proud. That being said, I want to thank our citizens, too. The parade goes right by our house. And so every year, after the parade, we go out and we just kinda police the area a little bit. I mean, there's been candy thrown, there's been, you know, I expect to find some stuff, that's not a bad thing, I expect to find it. But every single year, and even this year, when there were more people around my home, I could hold the trash that I had to pick up in my hands. It was a few candy wrappers, cigarette butter, too, that's about it. That's pretty ding dang good, and I live on a corner, that, that's, you know, so I'm really proud of our citizens. And then the street cleaner comes by, and I don't know why it, you know, occurred to me other than it's just my personality, I thought, I've never watched a street cleaner up close. I mean, I've seen them drive by and everything, but I wanted to see, wanted to see if, if that street cleaner was doing better than my Roomba in my, you know? That's what I wanna see. So I'm over there on the sidewalk, maybe a foot from the edge? It couldn't be too far, cause I'm actually, cause I'm watching to see if it gets in that crevice. By doggies, it does. And it sucks it up in there, it doesn't blow it out. It's fantastic. It's a little better than my Roomba. Well, I can't drive it, but anyway, so I, I'm just really proud of that, it's fantastic. Um, I have a, a small admonishment for our citizenry. There were rumors going around, and they were ugly rumors. They were rumors that, you know, I don't know how many people didn't go to Stampede because they were afraid. And it was all rumors. All precautions had been taken, as we've heard tonight, so many, and I've heard, up and, I've heard even from Stampede to now. People felt safe there. But for example, one of the rumors was, there were Colorado State snipers on the top of every Adam Street building because they were expecting something. No. There was probably a couple of police officers around, might even have been one or two on the roof, that's just smart. That's not thinking something big is gonna happen. And then the Montavista Police Department was even kind enough, they worded it much better than I would have, to put out, listen, we're hearing the rumors. We have no known threat. They didn't say there wasn't a threat, they can't say that. We don't know that we don't have a threat walk into our cars tonight. But they could say there was no known threat. And even that got twisted to the city's hiding things from me. So I'm gonna talk to the people that aren't in this room tonight, maybe they'll see this on YouTube. I hope they'll see this on YouTube. I hope enough people will talk about it, so they'll turn it on YouTube. My family, I and my family were at Stampede at various times during the celebration. Not all together, but we were all spread out. If you think for one minute that if I'd had any inkling there was going to be trouble there, do you think I'd have had my grown children and my grandbabies out there? Don't you think I'd have been begging them not to go? Putting up barriers? So I'm tired of the excuses of the city's hiding something. The city's not hiding something, you're not in here sitting, you're listening. So thank you very much. There's my buildup and my admonishment. But I think that the rumor mongering needs to be called for what it is. It's fine to, you know, watch television shows, or Facebook pages, or whatever, for entertainment, it's a circus, and that's fine. But when it starts being taken seriously, there's a problem. So let's watch some of this stuff for what it is, it's entertainment, it's a circus, it's made up fiction. Come here and find out the truth. Don't accuse the city of hiding when we're not. In fact, I see yes very clearly, a lot of people I don't see. Okay, I really am done this time, sorry.
Uh, I'll make mine quick. Stampede went off great. I can't tell you the number of compliments I've had from several different people, community members, non-community members, people that were, come to Montavista every year, and they come here because they love this community and what it brings. So that was a big plus. No unfair starts, uh, don't forget that, be diligent, pay attention to the youth, um, the, uh, Mr. Brown?
The extension agent told us that, uh, at the meeting that Jean and I were at, that previous years of fair attendance, youth being involved in that, was like two hundred, roughly around two hundred. This year, there's over four, four hundred kids involved with fair. It's the first time it's been that way in like twenty years, they said. So they really got a big push. So then go out and enjoy the county fair. So take care of that and enjoy it. Um, the water deal that you were talking about with the six counties and the municipalities that Jean, oh, he was gonna get some more information, I know, and visit with the attorneys to make sure. This is a very important thing that we need to do as a community, to all get into this, to tie it up, so they can't. We can't have Douglas County trying to do this again, or anybody else for that, so. Stay tuned for that, and anxious to hear what the railroad has. Monty strong, as always, stay diligent, pay attention, because I've seen some hoodlums running around in my neighborhood that, uh, I haven't caught them yet. I hope Chief catches them Friday. Thank you for everything, and we, we'll recess the meeting until August?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, six P M here.